Show up in the picture. Ready? Okay, the May meeting of the James Valentine Council is hereby called for order. Councilman Mauder? Okay, that is we do all in a prayer, please, about your hands, please. Almighty God, our heavenly Father, send down upon us a spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice that with steadfast purpose we may faithfully serve in our offices to promote the well-being of all people. We ask this in your name, amen.
Amen.
We could do a praise, please.
The United States Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
So next, we have a public hearing regarding ordinance 2023-04, proposed amendments and changes to accessory structure, driveway setbacks, changes to preferred bed and breakfast with short-term rentals terms, to further define clarified regulation. Okay, so no, well, anyway, I'm Mr. Kalowski. Are you here to speak about the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, please tell. Yes?
Okay. Thank you all, Mr. Mauder. What's here with Pauline Avenue? And I'm here to ask you for your support on passing the, whatever it's going to be, to get speed bumps on our street. And I have much more to say, but I did canvass the street as much as I could and came up with thirty-five residents who feel the same way. And I have documented their name, address, and signature, and I gave that to Nikki. So if you want to review that for clarification, that's all I got to say.
All right, well, thank you very much. All right, so we would, the public hearing is about the zoning issue, not other things. So this is changing our zoning ordinance, reflecting short-term rentals and setbacks. So and everyone here has signed up for Pauline is from Pauline Drive.
Yeah.
And are you all here to speak about the speed humps? I'll call you in a moment. Now, how about Eric Murray on Pauline Drive? So everyone here is here to speak about the speed humps. Is there anyone here to speak about the zoning issue?
Um, yeah, I guess I can.
Yes, go ahead.
I didn't sign this.
Well, let's go ahead.
Um, my name is Chris Jensen, and I have a couple of investment properties on Neighbor's Drive. I spoke here about a year ago, well, back in June, it's going to take a little more than three minutes, I'll try and shorten it. There's a little timeline here that I think I'd like you guys to be aware of. I've had a little conflict about my property being short-term rental. I don't live in these properties, I don't serve food in them. Your investment properties. And I was told by the town, not allowed to do it, they have a law, bed and breakfast law. I took them to court, they find me after I spoke with this town council back in June. Okay, then they give me a ticket for a thousand bucks. I told them, I'm not paying it, right? You're not going to see a dime of my money. I was extremely hot. I work very hard for these properties, okay? And I expect to get a return on my investment, and it's not appreciated. Okay, last time I checked, we live in America. Okay, I should be allowed to max out my return on my investment. Okay, renting real estate is legal activity. For them to get involved in the terms and conditions of how I rent my property, that's just beyond my ability to understand. I took them to court, and I won, and the judge agreed with me. There was a complaint about noise from short-term rentals, I have yet to see police reports reflecting that. I have yet to see market studies, feasibility studies, any kind of studies that say short-term rentals are the main source of noise ordinances or violation of them. Okay, I get to see that. We requested it by lawyer, right, but, you know, no response. There are so many benefits for short-term rentals, okay? I would be happy to give you guys seven and a half percent of my revenue off these properties to the tune of, you know, almost ten, ten grand a year, that's just one, that's just one investor talking about myself, but there are many short-term renters on this property that, you know, they don't, they don't, they're not renting properties right now, short-term, because of this heading you have on your website, no short-term rentals allowed, so they don't investigate. They don't push, I pushed it, okay, and it's cost me a ton of money, legal fees and so on and so forth, a lot more than a thousand dollar fine, which I could have just paid. After I win, the town has the nerve to go to my tenants and ask for copies of leases. I mean, what is this, Gestapo? You go to my tenants, come to me, you don't go to my tenants. Okay, and I made that clear, I have an email exchange with the town to reflect all of this, and they're telling me, they're telling me it's under investigation of a complaint, okay, well, I have yet to see this complaint.
There are times that.
There are a lot of benefits for short-term rental, okay? Take my revenue, build sidewalks, build better drainage, build bike paths. There's a lot of opportunity for short-term rental, and the revenue that it generates. I would appreciate you guys considering that, thank you.
So we have no other all right, may
My name is Dylan Silivant, I'm thirty-six years old, I'm born and raised here on James Island, and I could purchase my bird comb on James Island. We bought a house over in Clearview that has an ADU on it. The only requirement that we don't meet on this ADU is the acreage, we're just shy of having two-thirds acreage on it to get short-term rental permits. Um, yeah, we came here tonight not really knowing what to expect at first town hall meeting, but, um, yeah, we came to kind of listen, I wasn't expecting to speak. But we would like to know what hoops we could jump through to be able to get a short-term rental permit. We would take complete responsibility for any noise ordinances or, you know, anything like that, we get full approval from all of our neighbors. Um, but yeah, we've kind of dealt with the town somewhat. I think one of our biggest problems is that this ADU was built in the eighties, and the people who built it with the bed and bath are no longer around to admit to doing this while the town has been permitted, this structure to be legal. There's no records that date back past 2010 that the town has or the county. And that's what we've been asked to do, is to kind of find these old records that really don't exist in the systems that we're sent to. Um, so I think that's all I got.
Thank you.
Direct me to what to do next. Thank you, thanks.
All right, is there anyone else who would like to speak on the zoning?
My name is Stephen Ong. Several of you are relatively familiar with me, there's a ten twenty-seven grand concourse, and you know, we've been struggling with the town a bit trying to get our short-term rental up and going, it's also providing a guest house to our friends and family back there. It's, it's been difficult, but I have to say that the, for purpose of language, we obviously oppose it. But nonetheless, I think it's important to look at it as a quote, and what the town's attempting to do is take property rights, property owners, you think property rights, like bundled sticks, very valuable sticks, sticks of a bowl. The town's essentially taking away some of those without providing any compensation. So those sticks will include things like the ability to own your property, the ability to transfer it, to sell it, to rent it, to use it. Taking away or infringing upon our ability to use our property in a certain way is not proper, especially not without any kind of just compensation from the town. These are things that the town needs to consider before they improperly bring upon property rights of others. We have the right to use our property and to rent it, whether it's short-term or it's long-term. These are things that need to be taken into consideration, but more importantly, taking away those rights. That's all, guys.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, so I'll call the public hearing closed. Okay, next, we'll go to public comment. And Mauder, you will sign up for public comment as well.
I am.
Sign up for both, yes. Eric, Eric Murray?
Guys, doing around here, Eric Murray, I live at eleven eleven Pauline Avenue. My wife Judy is the one that's been handling the traffic home program and process that we've been going through. So she came here tonight, so she's asking me to step in, she's actually watching on the live feed, so she just wanted to say thank you to Mark and Nikki and the councilman there for everybody taking time and looking into this, the engineers, as well as everybody from Pauline that's helped with this, and all the letters and notifications that have been going out, that's been really great. The two main points that I'm here tonight to speak on were last, it was a couple of weeks ago when we were in here, Mark had said that the highest and lowest values during the time that we had the speed reader cable laid out in the road, those were thrown out highest and lowest, where I want to make a note in the DOT report that those highest values were upwards of like eighty, ninety miles an hour, I don't want those to be left out, so if we could have a note in there for the DOT to see that, as well as the second thing was that during the time the speed reading cable was being laid out, we had a stepped-up police presence, we had cops actually posted up in our yard, so I don't know if that coincides with lower average speeds, but to have a speed reading cable as well as a police officer stationed at the same time for those sixty, ninety days that we had it out there, I just want that to also be included in the report, that maybe that could have had coincidentally lower values in the speed, so really, that was about it, those two points, and I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, we have Mr. Moley? Miss Moley?
My name is Susan Moley, I live in twelve oh six Pauline Avenue. I just here to say that I hope that the town can support this and work very hard with the SC DOT about getting these, these humps in place. I looked at the map, I think everything looks great, a thousand feet apart. I've lived there for almost twenty-five years, and the speeding is out of control. And back in the day, I had a couple of cats killed on Pauline by, and certainly if they were going thirty, they would have seen them. I don't allow my cats outside anymore, but the, the DOT I know is, is part of Pauline Avenue, and I think it's super important that, that they know how passionate we are on Pauline Avenue about just taking care of this problem, instead of having another, yet another month or maybe a year go by while it's all still being talked about and nothing is being done. So I just hope that y'all collectively can get together with Mr. Powers and the other people that I have been in contact with on the SC DOT and get this done for us, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Craig Reed, is Reed?
He just said what I wanted to say.
Okay, great. And the boy, the bone?
I didn't want to sign me up to the caller, I just want to know signing in, but I do want to say I've lived at Pauline Avenue for thirty-five years, and it's a daily problem with the speeding, I've had two animals killed. I couldn't let my kids play in the front yard, because I was ready to go out in the street, they're grown now. I know the other families with kids, just, this is a daily problem. That's probably all I want to say.
All right, well, thank you. Thank you. And then Hazel Whalen.
Hi, I'm Hazel Whalen, and I live at eleven sixty-seven Pauline Avenue. And I'm here because we need speed bumps on that street. On my way here tonight, they were coming down here like they were on a racetrack, and something needed to be done before someone get hurt, and it's for someone running to something on that street, because I think when they come from that beach, it takes Pauline Avenue, and they come down our street, and we are not safe on our own street, not even going to the mailbox, because somebody else comes so close, even not be on one side, they come close, so I would like to see something done about that.
Well, thank you very much. All right, that's all we have signed up for public comment. Thank you. And next, we go to the consent agenda, that would be the Minx, is their motion approved? So move, yeah, Millican, Councilman Millican moved and seconded. Then, Councilman Monax, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, okay, that passes. So now we go to information reports. First, we have the financial report, Meryl.
Okay, um, loss and hospitality or more. Seeing that, we got three members. The branch received, wow. Under public works project, that is ongoing wireless regulation. Um, the credit under emergency management is for reimbursement for spray damage. Um, under park maintenance, we put some fill in rock and concrete for vehicle maintenance is a little higher than normal, we had, but the battery, we had two PMS. We also installed a device that allows us to fuel Charleston County, and then they pick up. And
Any questions? Thank you, Meryl. Next, we go to the town administrator's report.
And well, first, I will put our master of public administration intern, Sam Snyder, on the spot, he started with us last week. And he will be with us through later part of June, he's off to a great start, attending meetings, kind of learning about the system, digging deep into our council agendas, and just kind of learning everything he can about legislative government. And we also had the annual first shot event at Fort Johnson last month, we had a great crowd, and it was a beautiful day, so hopefully we'll keep on that role. And we continue to get ready with GoGo for the permitting and code enforcement side, so that's the internal functioning. And we have to, with Sammy's help, get some, you know, some procedures laid out, and how to manuals written and that sort of thing. And then the next project with GoGo is to utilize that platform to build like a map-based driving tour, where we can put the historic sites around the island on it, and then visitors or residents can kind of go and learn different bits of history around the island. And we have several upcoming projects, we've got wayfinding signage at Camp and Polly, potential new welcome sign at the Ellis Creek Bridge, and I hope to get together the bid package for exterior work at the Art Center. And Dock Street Park renovations, looking at a second floor for the town hall, and finally finishing Brantley Park, and then seeing what the dock permitting and repair estimate may come in at. And that's all I have.
Any questions for the town administrator?
Yes, I have one. It's in regard to our tree improvement project on Camp Road, and we just received the, this is the day of the assessment from that company. And I was hoping that maybe we could go ahead and expedite that process, since we've already allocated the funds for it.
Okay.
By having them start the work. We allocated fifteen thousand dollars for that process, and I think that the next step is for them to get busy.
So you would authorize?
So we'll be finding out what the cost is for doing the work.
Right. And that would be
Pursuing it.
That would be entirely short order?
Yes.
All right. Like short order, like a month or a week?
Yeah, I would say, I'm going to reach out to him and go ahead and get him to work on the estimates, so hopefully in the next couple of weeks, he will get that back to us.
All right, yeah, I'm just concerned because of this storm season, and the number of dead limbs in those trees, so it'd be good to have them taking care of it before that. Thank you.
I have a question. We're running the roof repair at the Art Center, is it a full roof replacement or?
So it would just be the one level, so it would not include the level that the panels were installed on, that roof is in fairly good shape, it would be the other section, and we've actually had somebody come and take a look of a potential sealer that could be applied to it, so instead of
So replacing, you could say like a cool seal kind of thing?
And I think it has like a twenty-year lifespan, so it seemed like a really good product, so we'll definitely look at those different options.
That's great, and help cut down noise also. That was my question, thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks. Public work report, Maura.
Good evening, everyone. In April, there were sixteen requests for service, the team had been closed down, and the other one was addressed by staff. Second, kind of the annual meeting of the actual group or stormwater education consortium. We held our monthly stormwater meeting. We also attended meetings with the engineers about the Pauline Traffic Coming, and we met with members of the HOA Board at the Preserve of Dills Bluff about their stormwater pond, and specifically to educate them on vegetated buffers around their ponds. Uh, we've been participating in weekly progress meetings for the Ocean Beach Stonehouse Project, and we participated in the Charleston Regional Hazard Mitigation. In April, we hosted the quarterly Pet Helpers Rabies Clinic, and we had fifty-four animals vaccinated, thirty-five dogs, I think, cats. Uh, we have met with property owners on Williams and Champagne Lane to explain the easements for the Green Hill, Honey Hill branch project. Uh, we've also participated in a graduate study of how public works directors prioritize branch projects with regard to sea level rise and on septic tanks. Seven additional septic tank inspections were accomplished in April of the ninety-five POGI residents in James Island Creek PMDO watershed that have septic tanks. Fifty-seven have been inspected, none of the symptoms inspected in April failed, there have been eleven total failures thus far. And we did some vegetative maintenance, built three potholes, and repaired two signs in April.
Any questions for Mark? Thank you, Mark. All right, Island Sheriff Patrol. Looking at James.
Even. This month, Mark had asked me to, Charleston asked me to look back at Dills Bluff, that's your complaints on Dills Bluff Road. And I looked back, and the Island Sheriff Patrol since January first, stopped one hundred and ninety-six vehicles on Dills Bluff, so quite a bit of vehicles that we stopped over there. We also put the counter out, the Stealth Town on Green Hill Road the other day, and I see what the speeds were, speeding through theirs is thirty miles per hour, twenty-five miles per hour, and any white ten and over, there was about three percent, we call it about ten and over. So, so we didn't see a drastic speed problem over there. Seaside was also asked to look at that, the last ninety days, we stopped one hundred and twenty-three vehicles on Seaside. And then we also put the counter out there, and there was almost thirteen thousand vehicles that went through, and thirty percent of them were twenty-five or less, sixty-one percent were between twenty-six and thirty more, thirty-four miles per hour. That twenty-five, about ten percent were higher than that. Um, this month, we had a David Hollers that was charged, I might have seen it in the news, charged with sexual exploitation of a minor, first degree times two, criminal solicitation of a minor, criminal sexual conduct with a minor under sixteen, second degree times two trafficking in persons on April twenty-sixth, that was over there, over here on James Island, and that was a ICAT case, which has been an internet crime against children, so they've been working real hard on that, and so it's one person that we definitely want, want to get off the island. At Clearview, we had a burglary on McCutcheon on May twelfth, in which an ex-husband came and entered a residence without permission, assaulted her, and warrants were taken out for burglary second and domestic violence first. Uh, in Long and Bluff, we had a break-in around May eighth, in the eight hundred block of Montgomery, where Blue Book back at Tana, Wisconsin, a DL, and a debit card, Apple AirPods were taken from an unlocked vehicle. We had a stolen and recovered vehicle at the hideout on Pauline Road, which we ended up knowing the suspect, one of the Glenn Sands, and he stole the victim's Toyota Tundra, and was stopped in Columbia by Forest Acres PD, and they ended up charging him with DUI, the charge mentioned, general influence possession of vehicle, and we made charges walking around our seat. And we also had another auto break-in around between May first and May second on Quail, with some debit cards were taken from a vehicle with no forced entry, and one of the cards was used at Walmart, and still under investigation. Besides that, and then I just stopped the car, W King is taking a female to jail for larceny that he had, where she, they stole them. Her and another man had stolen a stroller off of a porch, and so he rushed to her, and then I just got a guy just a few minutes ago, a little over a pound a week over on Camp Road, so he's also on the way to jail. So, that's all we have.
Any questions for James?
If you know anybody that needs a stroller, ask for Nicole, I'll make sure you get people.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, all right, all right, no recommendations out here, that's right, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we go to Pauline Avenue traffic coming request.
And so I will just introduce this before our engineer, Ms. Laura Gaviness, will do a presentation, but and we have been conducting this traffic study, so we placed the, the counters out three different times, collected the data, and you all approved taking it to the next step and having the engineering firm kind of look at what options there are. And we had overwhelming support, not one person in opposition to having speed humps, so that was nice. And so we're just taking the next step here, where she will show you where the, the proposal to put the speed humps is, and and move forward from there.
Okay, the thing you said on Laura Gaviness, I'm with J.L. Ray Johnson Lashover Associates. We've done a number of traffic coming projects for the town of James Island. So this is Pauline Drive, runs between Camp Road and Fort Johnson Road. The red circles there represent the existing stop signs that are all the intersections. The road and roadside ditches, there's a five block, about one point one mile long, and there's the intersection. The road and roadside ditches, there's a five block, about one twenty-one mile long, and there's certain intersections on it. Um so when we do these traffic studies, we get traffic count data that the town provides us with. We will give you the speed limit, the location, whether it's on the type of counter that the staff use. Um to look at the total number of vehicles over the time period, the average daily volume, high speed record. All these things go into the count of determining, especially on the state road, whether the traffic calm will be right or not. So these are the results of the data um that were taken on Polly Road. The last column on the right represents that eighty percent tile, which is a number that traffic engineers use. To determine what the average driver feels comfortable driving on that road. So we slower to have a very windy road or um. You know, restricted with, and it would be higher otherwise. Um here you can see that it was between forty-five miles an hour and thirty-four miles an hour. Which is exceeding the speed limit, so what we want to do is slow that down. Um this is some of the help we look at, some towns install some speed limit signs on places. Um mostly what we've done is um speed humps. Um and then we always get the quest for three-way stops, but these are these. Really strictly by S C D O two, the only time they allow three-way stops is if you have. Traffic accident records that demonstrate um that there's a high accident rate at the intersection. Or if there is a restricted visibility, then we don't believe that any three-way stops are going to be accepted. Well, out here, this is the typical speed hump in um installation show on Lord Ford, it's very correct company with a sign. Joe the morning. Um we look for um the right place of the longest route to put speed humps in. Typically, we're trying to stay away from people's drive away, we're trying to save this fact within infections. And we look for areas along property lines. And this is what we came up with for Polly, so Polly has some really um. Areas that that speed humps fit in very nicely, they were roughly a thousand feet apart on the. One mile away from the road. Um situated through an intersection and it's our recommendation. My next slide says questions, so probably not all of you with that for everybody to observe.
Any questions for? Any, uh so are we going to, this is. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Just a second. Any discussion?
I just want to say thank you to the residents of Polly for being so cordial during this speed hump. Issue some passing that pitchforks and fortunes and stuff and everybody, yeah, so it's not to see everybody. Being so cool.
Alright, so um there are no more discussion, all big say a, uh opposed, that passes. Alright, next, uh we go to seaside lane traffic calming, H L A common study.
And so the index as um as Sean told us about, they actually recently pulled some traffic data on seaside lane. And and I could, my jaw dropped when he said thirteen thousand vehicles go down that road each day, so this is. Um kind of the next street where we've had a lot of um. Requests for, you know, looking at a traffic calming plan for that particular road. Um so we asked J L A to put together a deep proposal to get working on that and the total was nine thousand five hundred dollars.
Your motion to approve, salute, second.
Second.
Discussion.
Oh, that's right about a high school, right? Just wanted to get the taken up now.
Yes. Hey, all favors say a, uh opposed, that passes. Okay, um repair care program replacement, one eleven thirty five.
And we got another repair care request um from um. That for humanity. Um and so this is to replace a roof right here on Hillman Street right behind us, and the total for that is thirteen thousand. Three hundred and ninety-seven dollars and ten cents.
Motion to approve?
So many.
Second. Then. Discussion. During that, all favors say a, uh opposed. That passes, next we go to um Grand Concourse Pipe.
Um there was, I'm sure some of y'all have noticed that there was a sinkhole um on Grand Concourse. Um that is a result of a um type failure, so we got. Some quotes together um from some of the contractors that the county has used previously. Um and the lowest bid for that was twenty thousand nine hundred and ten dollars. And Mark can give you some more details. If you have technical questions.
Is there a motion to approve? So move, is there a second? Then, any discussion?
Yes, it's just that same sinkhole situation that's been going on for a long time.
Uh no, this is another cross line pipe further up, the one you're talking about is where Harbor Town is still.
Right.
Yeah, not it, not that the city fixed that one rather nicely a couple of years ago, this is another pipe further up.
Is it part of the same?
Our same system, uh but this has an outfall a little bit further down. Um and this whole system was put in in the late nineteen sixties, so it's about time to. Expect failure even though it's R T P.
Yeah, the reason I ask is I just wonder about the quality of the rest of the system. And if this is just gonna be sort of a short term. Patch or whether we want to address this systemically at some point?
I think systematically moving forward, we should probably camera all of the cross lines uh on Regatta and uh. Grand Concourse, just because of the headwind, traffic that's gone through there over the years, particularly building that city neighborhood in the back.
Is there a plan to do that?
Develop along.
Okay.
We need to find out how much it's gonna cost.
Right. Alright, that's it, thank you.
Any uh further discussion?
Do you have the camera equipment?
No, we gotta hire somebody to do that. Yeah, we have to hire somebody, and in county business, they usually are, we'll probably get E's or Sanders Brothers.
Alright, any uh further discussion? All favors say a, opposed, that passes. Next we go to committee reports, land use committee, council, woman and the honor.
I know it's worth, thank you.
Council, um. No, again, uh environmental communication.
Yes, um the environmental and beautification committee of the Changon Island Pride, which is the citizens committee. Of the environment, the beautification committee did. On April twenty-ninth, James Island Pride joined the Grace Triangle Association and hosted a litter pickup that focused on the seaside lane. Honey Hill, Green Hill area, we had a great turnout from our community and managed to remove nineteen bags of litter and nine. Pires, uh we would like to thank Joel and Chelsea Lucas from Edison's Restaurant for providing us with a delicious lunch for all the volunteers. We have another about the highway litter pickup scheduled for Saturday, June third. And as usual, we'll meet here at town hall at nine, pick up litter for two hours and then enjoy pizza and fellowship out on the porch. Uh that date again is June third at nine, it's a Saturday. Helping Hands will meet at Pintney Park at nine A M this Saturday morning. Helping Hands is an organization of volunteers led by Stan Katsikowski. That helps residents who do not, do not have the ability to care for their yards out in doing so. If you or your organization would like to help, you may contact Robin Sanders at town hall. At eight four three seven nine five four one four one. That's eight four three seven nine five four one four one for information. Please join us this Saturday at nine at Pintney Park where we will meet, load up and take care of some yards. That's all I have.
Alright, next, uh children's committee, no report. Um public safety committee?
Uh yes, we'll have a neighborhood council uh meeting here next Thursday with seven of us. Um and everyone's um invited to attend, and that's all I have to say, thank you.
History committee, the um history committee has been meeting. And uh we had the first shot, which um. Think he reported was very successful and um. We are working on our history trail. Any questions? Um next, we think Polly Road. Let's turn it.
It should be towards the end of, end of June, um and we had a very successful uh mobility month event over at Martin's Barbecue. I think we had about a hundred people come through, so that was great to kind of drum up some activity. Get people back involved where they can look at um proposed maps for future phases and um and talk about the plans.
Thank you. Drainage committee?
I'm not reporting this time.
Okay, business development committees?
We'll report, thank you.
Tree advisory committee?
Yes, the tree advisory council made a canopy of distinction award to the Good Family for their majestic oak tree. At fifteen twenty-nine Harvardview Road, get a chance, go check it out, it's beautiful, and you've probably already seen it. Uh so wow, that's a great tree, but we gave them an award for it. Tree Advisory Council met on May ninth, we identified a canopy award and a tree steward award winner that will be announced in July. We also discussed plans for a fall tree internship program that would identify places to plant trees along our island right aways. We hope to have students from Trident Tech College Charleston Citadel, Citadel participation. Finally, we also discussed plans to identify and keep right away tree care projects going after we complete the Camp Road project. That's all.
Alright, thank you. Um James Island governmental council?
We'll meet again um in the fall, I believe. Late summer.
Alright, um proclamations and resolutions. Proclamation for the sixty-third annual public work group, is there a motion to approve? So move, a second. Then, all favors say a.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes. A resolution two thousand twenty-three oh seven at Charleston County Transportation um. Tax fund neighbor. Drive sidewalk project. My name.
Sure, um so this is the um, it's the last of the series of sidewalk projects that we have kind of up and coming. Um it has been in preliminary design, um we have an S, an estimated probable cost of about four hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Um this roadway um includes county jurisdiction, town jurisdiction and city jurisdiction. So the way that um. The resolution is presented is that I will. Try to pursue um gaining funding from those other entities um to commit to the fifty percent match. For C T C funds, so that would go for the F Y twenty-four C T C application cycle. And it should be shovel ready by that swing.
Is there a motion to approve? Salute, your second?
Sir.
That was almost a tie, I go, we can give that with councilman walls to stop. Okay, um any discussion?
The whole, the whole project costs four, four hundred and seventy thousand dollars, that's for the sidewalk and everything, not just for the. And then. So then we're gonna add the other indecent to help with the fifty percent that we're contributing, so it's about that fifty percent by.
Right, there's um.
Or is it talking down by?
It's roughly fifty fifty between city and town and then um unincorporated Charleston County has. I think about nine properties in that stretch, so there. Okay, so there's forty-five um. Properties that are directly adjacent to the sidewalk, city of Charleston has twenty of those, the town has. Seventeen, I believe, and then unincorporated is nine, so I broke it down in the percentages. And that's what we would pursue, getting some help with it.
Great, thank you.
Yes, and uh since this is a C T C project, would the drainage also be the first consideration fired to the sidewalks going in? Is that how it works with county on the project?
This is the Charleston Transportation Committee, it's the state funds, but fixing the drainage would be an important issue.
But is that cost included here or is that something, it'll be an add-on or?
Um, I would have to check on that.
Oh, Laura, do you remember? Remember the jail we worked for?
We did put an escalator in there for, for drainage. Um we know that there's inches longer than you like to get the sidewalk in.
And I think that's one of the reasons it's pretty expensive, though it's also long compared to many of our project.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, um. Well, it's um all favors say a, opposed, that passes. Resolution um twenty twenty-three oh eight require real property located at eleven twenty-nine moment. Sorry, let's get that.
Sure, um so I obtained an environmental report for somebody to come and take a look at the grounds at the Hillman property, which is right behind us. And they found no um no remains of any construction debris, the only thing that they cited was a potential um. Former septic tank. So it got a clean bill of health.
Is there a motion to approve? I'm gonna do a second. Second, okay, any discussion? Okay, all favors say a.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes. Okay, one is up for first reading, this is the ordinance um. Twenty twenty-three oh four, the amendment changes accessory structures, driveway setbacks, changing the merge. Ben and breakfast term, a short-term rentals term to further define, clarify regulation. Is there a motion to approve? So move, is there a second? Well, seconded, okay, so let's conclude and seconded, uh any discussion?
Yeah, I, I have a question, so. By, by changing our ordinance, emerging itself together, does this add more restrictions to our terminal than we had previously?
No.
No.
No, so what's the purpose of merging this?
Clarifying the ordinance.
Yeah. So do we know how many short-term rentals we have in J bound?
We have, I believe, sixteen. Um legally operating, twenty-four legal, legally operated. And of course there are. So yes, twenty-four legally permitted children.
We derive a revenue from?
Um, yes, we like.
And the accommodation tax? The state.
Also, the folks we can't spoke to this seem to be concerned that there are restrictors. And I know that we can't directly address. Public, but we discuss whether this proposed amendment is going to in any way change what. Someone can do with a short-term rental.
Yes.
Okay, so um it would still prohibit short-term rentals if you were non-owner occupied. So one of the people that spoke tonight um has them, as he said, as investment properties, and so this would never be legal unless. An owner or an operator lives on the site. Um, the folks that um do live at the property, um. You know, none of the verbiage is changing, it's really adding. The word short-term rental to our ordinance where it just had been breakfast previously. Um and kind of define some things, there's always a question about, you know, do you have to serve breakfast? So you make kind of those definitions, there's also questions at times if um you're allowed to have a kitchen. In your separate short-term rental or if it has to be a shared kitchen, so these are, you know, if you think about it. In a bigger picture, it's, you know, you're having an outside person come stay. in a bigger picture, it's, you know, you're having an outside person come stay in your house, and so you're gonna have a little bit more control. And and be a little bit more specific about who you're gonna have in your home and rent out a room or a section of your home. And not just have it, you know, kind of open to rent all the time and have transient people kind of in and out of residential neighborhoods.
I know in the city, in the short-term rental district, you have to close in your area to advertise with your license.
Yes. I believe that was.
But it's not a part of it.
And when we tax it, this is through business license taxes, we take a tax based on the reported revenue. What is this, right?
Correct.
And the, but the, and then the accommodation tax that wasn't relevant, well, it's also related to the revenue. So there's an accommodation tax that is passed at the state level, and they share that money, they give that money back to us. And then, but then the business licenses, you know, to operate an Airbnb, bread and breakfast, short-term rental. Oh, business licenses.
And what about complaints related to non-owner occupied?
So those are typically the ones that we get the most complaints from. You know, what's that?
Like rather emails or are there?
Yes, so that's, you know, I could go back and pull together a whole reporter code enforcement complaints and things that have been investigated.
I know that New Orleans, for example, had a rare time of people being supplanted by non-owner occupied short-term rentals. It's funny to hear the property rights is a little sticky, that's like property law. Your one thing that we get, I think that we can regulate all of this, if we're within our power to, but I do think it would be everyone's best if this for us to be careful about how I go forward with this. I know this is just the first reading, right, so it's not gonna be enacted even if we go to the favor of it, but I am interested in exploring how much more the town may be able to benefit from a permitting and revenue perspective from these. So that being said, I would move that we defer this and look into some of these, I would like to see the complaints. I've seen this house unneighbored, overrun with kids. So I believe there are complaints. But at the same time, I know you can make a lot of money from here. If we do something that's gonna take away everybody's love, I would think we just, let's learn about this a little bit more, so that's why I make that.
Um, well, is there a second to defer?
I would say yes.
Okay, all in favor of deferring? Say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. So it fails. So.
I have a question just about some of the more specifics in here related to parking. Isn't the case that when you're assessing a license for an Airbnb, that you go in and have a really good look at how the parking situation might be and how many cars it can accommodate? Because a lot of times you see, you know, five cars in the front yard, that kind of thing. And that's not great. And I just wonder if parking spaces, that's just part of the permit process?
It is.
So you can get a good idea of that.
I believe.
Yes, we ask for a parking and name and restrict one car per guest, the one in B three four plus the car of the wall.
But Derek, keep in mind that there, you know, if, if a property is rented by the month or an annual lease, these, those restrictions don't. Right, so, well, I mean, there are restrictions on parking things, but it's not the same as the short-term rental Airbnb. So it's not, excuse me, I keep on saying Airbnb. You know, so traditionally, our ordinance is just, you know, the bread and breakfast ordinance, it has been in existence since the town has been in existence. And it prohibits short-term rentals unless the owner lives there. And, and it would been. And it, you know, has these restrictions. And so we're not really changing any of that, we're just clarifying the ordinance. So we're not changing ordinance to take away rights as people come, move to our community, bottom of the community, and they told us, you know, they think, well, they, they believe, they don't, they're not aware of the restrictions that we've had for years now. And the restrictions we have now, of course, in town, the current town is on existence since two thousand twelve, but those applied in the county before two thousand twelve. And then, you know, town two, they applied then, and town three, they applied then. And it is true that, you know, with Airbnb, there's been a big expansion in the use of short-term rentals. And the town has kept its ordinance all along. And other jurisdictions have changed the ordinance to allow people to rent in residential areas. And so really what you're doing is taking the residential neighborhood, which and making it into a small hotel. And we do allow that, and traditionally allowed it only if the person lives there. And this just keeps the ordinances we have. And it clarifies that while our current ordinance just says bread and breakfast, that that's, you know, what short-term rentals meant. And, you know, back when our ordinance was passed originally by the town, I believe in two thousand two, in town two. You know, I don't think short-term rentals was something people talked about, and certainly Airbnb wasn't anything people talked about. But bread and breakfasts were things that existed, and our ordinance was based on bread and breakfasts, and we kept it that way. And so we're not changing the ordinance to prohibit newly prohibit short-term rentals, they're just continuing what the ordinance we have.
I have a question about the D. Section E versus those two, like there should be no cooking or kitchen uses in the round space.
So that is just distinguishing that it won't, the, the living safe space that's set aside for, for the short-term rental use would not have a separate kitchen, it would be a shared kitchen. Of course, there would be like a legal non-conforming aspect to it. Like I believe one of the gentlemen said that you have to kind of go back in time and see that something was legally permitted back in the eighties or the nineties or at Charleston County, so those do kind of come up on a case-by-case basis. So if something was already pre-established there, then, you know, we can work through. Right.
And they can make it rent that with a kitchenette and all of that.
Yes, if it was built legally with correct zoning and building permits, that could remain in place. If it's a new building or a new portion of your home that you were kind of setting aside to rent as a short-term rental, you would not be able to put a separate kitchen or kitchenette in that space.
Unless because of this, that we've added, or no?
It's under current, it's, it's already illegal to put in a separate kitchen.
I was just getting clarification, thank you very much.
And a lot of times that is the question, well, we don't, you know, we don't serve breakfast, so this doesn't apply. And, you know, that's difficult to argue and to support.
Really to, my last question. So basically, to, to look at all this and know that we're not changing in restricting property owner rights by approving this ordinance for first reading. And the issues that people have with property rights is already in the original ordinance. So if we were going to address that, we would have to go back and adjust the ordinance in a different way, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Well, it sounds like the way it's written now, at least this gentleman, is able to continue reporting to the management board.
No, so he did not win that case, the judge decided to dismiss it because they asked for some more clarification in our ordinance because he felt that it was vague. Mr. Benson's argument was that he doesn't live there, and so therefore does not qualify as a short-term rental. And so he should just be able to rent it as he pleases. So that's kind of where the heck it was, but he did not win that case.
The, the judge actually said that the, that the town and Mr. Benson had come to an agreement.
I'm sorry, I mean.
No.
Well, we're not allowed to call. You get removed if you're around the council or talk after. It, this, all of it sounds to me like maybe cleaning up what happened with his case. And his ordinance to make it better, if you, in my experience, if I'm a lawyer representing somebody and the judge dismisses the other side, I would hope that win. It sounds like the judge did not enforce the current ordinance against him. The judge did not say, okay, you're in violation of this ordinance, therefore you're a stop from doing this, this is how the judge said, this is unclear, how to interpret it, so I'm not going to stop him.
That's, so that's, that's the error part, the judge said that he can't do it in the future, and he's not doing it now. Or at least.
Right, he has a long-term rental in there right now.
And so the judge's view was that since he no longer has short-term rentals and has a long-term rental, the case was mute. But the judge did say that we should clarify.
When we say we're not changing anything, that doesn't sound accurate based on what the review we've done.
So he would be considered, let's say, in regard to the county's short-term rental ordinance. They do allow non-owner occupied, but that's only allowed in certain zoning districts, or you have to get a special exception from the board of zoning appeals before you be allowed to rent out your property that you do not live at. We don't, we don't have anything for somebody that does not live at the property. So anybody that doesn't live there would always be in violation. There is a clarification that you can have like a manager or somebody that's not the actual owner stay on the property, so that does provide a little bit more flexibility in the interpretation of that section. But, but either way, whether it stays the same or that these changes are made, he would still be in violation because it's a, it's considered a commercial operation, and that's how other entities view it. So it's kind of two different classifications, there's the owner occupied and the non-owner occupied.
We'll say one last thing, that'll be done, the Bali Beach dresses with this recently. The State House is talking about this, I think Senator Sen tried to put something in a budget provides that didn't work. I think it's a, it's a topic that is important, and will, and will probably only grow in importance. And personally, I don't feel educated enough on the complaints or the arguments in favor, that's really my fault, I wasn't even aware of this management court matter until early today. For, so again, if we vote this through, I don't see us coming back to it, right, like, like do something to it well and we'll be finished with it. And that's why I'll just urge caution for proceeding, develop with more research and.
Well, I, you know, would note that our planning commission voted in favor of this, what was the, what was the vote on by the? So, you know, it has been reviewed by our planning commission. The, our town attorney and our planning director worked on this ordinance. The town has traditionally, has not allowed non-owner occupied short-term rentals. I believe that property owners who want to rent their property can rent it month to month and make plenty of money and provide housing for residents of James Island as opposed to compete with hotels. And, you know, that's what short-term rentals are about, is being in competition with hotels in residential neighborhoods.
Different though, I mean, an Airbnb or a short-term rental home is different than saving. People don't go for it. When I travel, I look at one as the other, I'm like, really? See them the same, I mean, they're both accommodations. Number two, it raises the property value of all of our homes. Because I have a downtown that was lived in the short-term over, coincidentally, it just got locked on the straight street. And when they pass that, the value of the, like, commercial property, the square foot value in the short-term over, it's a lot more. And I'm not saying that we just let folks, you know, turn this into a, you know, just a step to Bali Beach and make this like a little hub, kind of hangout spot for college kids to come in, come all over. But at the same time, it raises all of our property values to allow this. I know you're saying that we do allow sort of.
We do.
I would like to do it again with more data, and I understand the planning commission. And I appreciate everybody's efforts, it's probably my fault for not keeping a finger on the pulse. But I do just, I want to urge this body to think. Number one, I'm not a fan of more rules, I don't think we're here to be hallmarkers. Number two, it will raise every single person insurance bill without. And that's all.
All right, any further discussion?
Yes, I, I believe that property owner rights work both ways. I believe that you have the property owner who wishes to have one of these Airbnbs. But I also believe you have existing property owners in the neighborhood who may not appreciate an entire neighborhood turning into an Airbnb district. And I think that that's kind of what happens in some of these situations. It's not just one house, it might be ten to fifteen houses on a street. And then pretty soon, nobody cares so much about the yards on the street and other things. And it turns into something that's a little bit different than a neighborhood. And I, the thing I like about James Island and that I like about this ordinance is it helps preserve the property rights of the people that live in the neighborhood. And that's why I love it. That's my concerns.
Well, again, I would just say that this is maintaining our current longstanding policy. And it is true that, that we did have the county magistrate judge say that we need to clarify our policy. And including the term short-term rental helps clarify the policy. And we've enforced this rule against people who rent their properties, rent their houses out. And, and it is certainly not the case that the judge said that, well, we can't do it anymore. That we can't enforce this, and that Mr., you know, that the defendant in that case can go ahead and continue renting his property out short-term, that's false.
So, a question. So in order to, everybody have the information that we would need to feel comfortable before we pass the second reading on this. If we approved the, this first reading for the ordinance, right? And before we do the second reading, is it possible for all of council to take copies of like the complaints and the, and the information that the planning commission gathered and have it emailed us so we can have, so we can satisfy all of our our desires to have all the information that we want?
Well, of course.
Thank you. I think that would be helpful.
All right, any further discussion? There are none, all in favor, say aye? Pass, that passes, all opposed? All right, so, sorry. All right, now, ordinance is for second reading, or two thousand twenty-three oh three, ordinance adopted fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four budget. Is there a motion to approve? One second. Discussion? There are none, all in favor, say aye? Oppose, that passes. Okay, let's turn to new business.
Yes, I have someone to put forward for. Yes, I have someone to put forward for the BZA. Hey, I do that, that was part of the meeting.
So what, what do you mean?
I'm just thinking this guy. Resolved.
Oh. I'm sorry, so, actually, the, that's, that'll be fine, um, we, we really do that during the land use committee report, but that's, it'll be fine.
Would it be okay now, put it forward now, are you serious, it's Mason Gattelli?
Everybody, remember.
Um, he was horrible once, I met him, I think it'd be a solid choice, so I would make a motion.
Second.
I second.
On favor, say aye. That passes, congratulations, thank you so much for agreeing this on the BZA. Alright, so, um. Next is executive session, and I would move that we go into executive session, discuss contractual matters regarding the town administrator contract. For a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. That's the passes, so we, we are gonna go into executive session, and um, we'll be back, and we don't have too much business.